We will now call our March the 6th meeting to order, our regular school board meeting here in St. Lucy County. Welcome everyone that's here this evening. I hope you've had a wonderful day. We will begin our meeting at this time. We are going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and directly after that, we will recite the Treasure Hunter's Pledge. And then we will hear from the students of Alapat the Flats under the direction of William Cromer, and they will provide a special performance for us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing as we recite the Kids and Hope Treasure Hunters pledge. As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. I will ask the board members to please go down for the performance. Thank you.
Old Man Tucker's a mighty man, washed his face with a frying pan, combed his hair with a wagon wheel, dyed with a toothache in his heels. So get out of the way, old man Tucker, you're too late to get yourself up. Supper's over and dinner's coming. Old Man Tucker, just stand there again. All day, all time, you're gonna get me out. Hounding, barking, duck, birds, cattle, all the stuff. So get out of the way, old man Tucker, you're too late to get yourself up. Supper's over and dinner's coming. Old Man Tucker, just stand there again. Get out of the way, get out of the way, hold on. Get out of the way, get out of the way, hold on. Old Man Tucker climbed a tree, he's lying, he's just a poor detective. Let me front him, not to fall. We've got to see his, we've got to see his, we've got to see his, we've got to see his foot. Get out of the way, old man Tucker, you're too late to get yourself up. Supper's over and dinner's coming. Old Man Tucker, just stand there again. Get out of the way, get out of the way, hold on. Get out of the way, get out of the way, hold on. Get out of the way, get out of the way, hold on. Hold on.
Mr. Cromer, we want to thank you for your wonderful performance. Alapat the Flats students, we appreciate as you go back down to your seats. We appreciate what you did tonight. You took me back with that "Oh Motherless Child," "A Motherless Child." I remember my mom singing that, sweeping the floors and cleaning the house, and she would be singing, you know, "A Motherless Child." And so you really took me back with that, and it was beautiful, absolutely beautiful. Give them another hand, please, everyone. And then, of course, we all know about Old Man Tucker, don't we? Now, parents, we would like for you to all stand, parents and family who have come here and have been supportive of our students, because your student, your child, is ours also when they're in our school system. And we thank you for being so supportive of your children. Thank you very much. Okay, you can be seated now if you like. Thank you again, Mr. Cromer. Very good. Thank you. Okay, once again, we thank our parents and our students for bringing that wonderful performance to us this evening. At this time, we're going to ask Superintendent Gent, if you would please lead us in our special order of business.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. This is going to be Music in Our Schools Month, and we're going to have special proclamation and student recognition, so I will call on Dr. Perry and Ms. Patrick to come up, and I believe we're going to head back down again. It's good exercise.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Mr. Gent, I'm actually pinch hitting for Mr. Luke Hall, who is the fantastic band director at Treasure Coast High School. He was a teacher of the year, is the Teacher of the Year for Treasure Coast High School, and one of our finalists, who hasn't made it yet to read our proclamation. And I only have it on my phone, okay? Whereas, March has been officially designated by the National Association for Music Education for the Observance of Music in Our Schools Month. And whereas, music lasts a lifetime is the 2018 theme for the National Association for Music Education. And whereas, the study of music contributes to the development of young people through heightened skills in listening, reading, self-expression, and creativity. And whereas, the study of music is basic to a complete education and provides a competitive edge for a successful educational reform while engaging students in individual and group activities which develops creativity, problem-solving, and critical and evaluative skills. And whereas, music education helps students express skills in the production and performance of music, as well as gives them an understanding of history and culture. And whereas, music and other arts significantly enhance the morale and quality of the school environment and the events surrounding it are ideal opportunities for increasing awareness of the benefits of high-quality music education programs in our nation's schools. And whereas, music programs should be maintained and improved for all students regardless of socioeconomic status or their abilities. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the School Board of St. Lucy County endorses and observes the month of March as Music in Our Schools Month. Mr. Superintendent, we respectfully request that you recommend the board adoption.
Second by Mr. Shilson, all in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you. St. Lucy Public Schools has a rich and storied history of supporting the arts. In doing so, music and music education is important to the curriculum for all students. As we continue our Music in Our Schools Month celebration, we'd like to recognize some music students with the Music Spotlight Award for their outstanding performances. All of these students individually passed a rigorous and highly competitive audition process where they are required to demonstrate musicianship, rhythm and tonal proficiency, music theory, and artistic expression. Acceptance into one of these elite groups is a direct result of the talent, dedication, and musicianship of these accomplished students and the superior instruction provided by their dynamic music educators. I would like to add that unlike athletic groups that make it to state, these students have to qualify individually and once selected are afforded the opportunity to perform at the highest level with their peers from the other 66 counties in the state of Florida. All of these students were selected to participate in All-State, the 2018 All-State Ensembles. And we're starting tonight with Forest Grove Middle School. Their fantastic teacher is Ms. Kathy Oskin, who's in preparation for her NPAs this weekend. And the wonderful principal is Mona Rae Buchanan, and she has with her Amanda Huntington, who was a member of the 2018 All-State Middle School Treble Chorus, and Sebastian Spence, the 2018 All-State Middle School Mix Chorus. And from Westwood High School, he's known as the Drum Major. He was a member of the 2018 High School All-State Honor Band. His wonderful instructor is Mr. August, and Mr. Joe Lazo is his fantastic principal. This is Mr. Javon Osborne. And from Lincoln Park Academy, the fabulous Proud Principal is Mr. Henry Salabria, and their wonderful teachers are Mr. Albert and Mr. Ramming, Florida 2018 All-State Symphonic Band Member Gabrielle Small. And our final awardee is a member of the 2018 All-State Concert Choir. I'd like to also mention that four years ago, this young man was before us because he was a member of the All-State Middle School Treble Chorus. Please welcome back for the second time in four years, Mr. Donald Zoll. Thank you. And before I take my seat, I just want, if you've listened to some music today, raise your hand. You are proof evident that music lasts a lifetime, which is our 2018 theme. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Board Member, Superintendent Gent, we would like to thank Stacy Donnelly, our Wellness Manager for St. Lucy Public Schools, because she helps us stay focused on healthier habits. And this evening, it is definitely my pleasure to invite to the podium Mrs. Marcia Jacquet, who is the Executive Director of the American Lung Association in our area. And she has come this evening to present to you all the Silver Level Award on behalf of the Tobacco Cessation Alliance.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much, oops, thank you so much for having me here. It is such an honor to be representing the American Lung Association. There are some facts that we all need to know. Lung cancer is the number-one killer cancer of men and women in the United States. One in five is diagnosed every five minutes. We can stop that. You have stopped that. You have saved lives by putting concentration on tobacco cessation and helping us eradicate this terrible, terrible habit and addiction that does lead to this disease. So on behalf of the American Lung Association, it is my honor to present you with this award, and I thank you so much and hope to come back every single year.
And we continue with some wonderful accolades. Mr. Bill Tomlinson is going to come forward because he has some outstanding news to share in regard to a program that is very special and near and dear to our hearts.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Gent, I have with me this evening Lisa Kitsmiller, who's our Program Specialist for Transition for Students with Disabilities, and she's also representing our Quad County Interagency Coalition. We're here this evening to present a Navigator Award. For the last two years, St. Lucy Public Schools, in conjunction with the Board of County Commissioners, has worked collaboratively to create a community work experience for students with disabilities. With the collaboration of Martha Taylor, our Job Coach for Exceptional Student Education, and Mr. Douglas Baber, Human Resources Manager for St. Lucy County Board of Commissioners, and the support of Mr. Howard Tipton and Mrs. Franny Hutchinson, we were able to develop the Coffee Perks Program. This program operates every Tuesday at the Board of County Commissioners' office on Virginia Avenue. This is a wonderful opportunity for students to transfer the skills that they have been taught in the classroom to a real-life experience, and in hopes the skills that they learn on the job will help them to gain competitive employment. We're so proud to have this opportunity to work with Mr. Baber and the work that goes on with Martha Taylor, our Job Coach. Could we have Mr. Baber and Ms. Taylor come forward, please? And Mr. Baber is going to say just a few words.
Hi, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Mr. Gent, thank you guys very much for the honor. We've had a great partnership with the School Board. It's just been so amazing to watch these kids grow every Tuesday morning, and the kids that graduated last year and moved on, and then a new group came right in. They went through an interview process, they were able to earn these positions, and they strive every Tuesday to do the best that they can, and we are just as happy as we can be to have them come every Tuesday. And thank you, guys, for the partnership. I'm sorry that Commissioner Hutchinson nor Mr. Tipton could be here today. They have a commission meeting that starts at 6:00 as well, and I'll be racing back myself, but we do appreciate you taking the time to honor us. And Martha Taylor and her whole team has just been amazing to work with. Thank you, guys, very much.
We are so very fortunate to live in a community that is thriving with our students and the activities that go along with it, and are interested from our business partners and community organizations. Many, many of our schools have received a Five Star School Award, and here this evening to share just a wee bit about what the Five Star School Award is, is our volunteer coordinator, Ms. Martha Underwood.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Gent. Thank you for allowing me to come and recognize our Five Star School Award recipients tonight. A Five-Star school must have a grade of C or above for the whole school year to qualify for the Five-Star Award. A school must meet 100% of the criteria in the categories of business partnerships, family involvement, volunteers, student community service, and school advisory councils. The school must provide and create a portfolio of documents that provides evidence of compliance with each of the criteria in their nomination form. At this time, I would like to ask the recipients of the Five-Star Award to please come forward and have a picture made with the School Board Members and Mr. Gent. And please turn your eyes towards the screen. There, the list of the Five-Star Schools are listed for you on the board. This year, we do have 26 schools that are receiving this award. Thank you so very much.
And as we move into our final category, which is our Star Awards for this evening, ongoing professional development bodes well for individuals who strive to provide exceptional customer service, and so it is with our team of certified and master custodians who have recently taken it upon themselves to heighten their level of service to others and elevate their personal capacity for success by completing job-specific certification programs. At this time, I would invite Mrs. Carolyn Rerrick to come forward, and we will be presenting their certifications and their Star Awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Gent. It is my pleasure to honor the following plant managers and an area manager who have completed certified, it's Florida School Plant Manager Association's Certified Custodian. That is a 64-hour course that they've taken. In addition to that, some of our plant managers also have both FSPMA Certified and Master Custodian. Master Custodian means they've gone the extra 40 hours in addition to the 64 hours for certification. I would like to call up first Donald Jordan from Fairlon Elementary.
Absolutely.
Good evening, everybody. I really appreciate this award. It just makes me feel so good, and I want to thank Carolyn for bringing people together to receive our certification in plant manager, because I love what I do. But I also want to say, I worked under a true principal. I just want to call their name and move forward. Mrs. Smill from Fort Pierce Central, he encouraged me. Also, I work at Fairlon, where I'm at now as a plant manager, with Ms. Hadeen that was there. And now, I'm working with Ms. Holmes, who is now the principal there at Fairlon Elementary. And last and not least, I want to say, Fairlon is an A-rated school. Go, Ms. Holmes.
Next, for Certified Custodian, is Michael Bean from Morningside Elementary. The following have completed both the Certified and Master Custodian. First is Charles Smith from Palm Point. Next is Tommy McCarthy from Forest Grove Middle. Next is Wilfredo Valentin Garcia, known as Willie. Jeanette Marin from Westgate K-8. Zeno Mitchell from White City Elementary.
Solomon Stewart from Fort Pierce Westwood. And Rudy Mana, who is one of our area managers with custodial services.
Thank you very much for everything that has gone forward so far with our special order of businesses. I asked one of the young people who came up for the music award, what is it that he wants to be come in life because I've seen him constantly, he's been in music for years and years. And I thought he was going to say something about music and he said to me, "I want to be a math teacher." So, young man, we hope you come back to St. Lucie County and do just what you desire to do, become a math educator. We could use you. Okay, thank you very much. Congratulations to all of those who received special recognition with the five-star school awards as well as our star presentation and we definitely thank the plaque that we received from the Tobacco Prevention Organization. Many years ago, I was one of those tobacco prevention people working for the Health Department. There were five of us and I was the tobacco prevention coordinator for the community. So, I really do appreciate all of the work that they have been doing for many, many years and because of your diligent work, there are a lot less people that are now using tobacco. So, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we're going to go right into our CTA report.
Seems that I'm always here when it's Music in Our Schools Month because I think I did this last year. Part of the reason is that due to spring break and everything, y'all changed your schedule and so we have a regularly scheduled worksite leader meeting on this Tuesday. So, that's where Vicki is right now. So, I'm just filling in for her at this point. We, first of all, would like to thank you all for your support of educators and their safety in the wake of the recent tragic events. We appreciate that the superintendent and his staff became proactive and transparent in providing the necessary changes to ensure the safety of all students and employees and we're already seeing some results. We applaud the superintendent and the board for joining us and the St. Lucie County Sheriff in not supporting the arming of teachers in the classroom. We look forward to continuing our collaboration to ensure that all students and employees feel safe so that learning can be our focus in the coming months and years. We also want to thank the board for the bonus for our non-classroom members who were cut out of the state bonus program. We feel that that is, that makes evidence that the board values all teachers and what they do for children. However, we're not done with negotiations and we're looking forward to negotiating a bonus for our educational support staff as teachers cannot do their job without them. Our ESPs are the backbone of all successful schools. Therefore, we must have an agreement for additional compensation for them before we begin to bargain compensation for 2018 and 2019 school year. Again, we encourage, we are encouraging the district to stand with us against 7055. Although it is now passed the Senate, the fight is not over. Our emails and phone calls should be directed to the governor, encourage him to veto Bill 7055, and thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hill, for your report. We would now have our CWA report. Seeing that there is none, we're going to move on with our agenda tonight. And we want to do the consent agenda. At this time, I'm going to call for a motion and a second to adopt our consent agenda. So moved by Ms. Harley and second by Mr. Ingersoll, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, Superintendent Wayne Gent, would you give us your recommendation, please?
Recommend approval of the consent agenda as submitted.
Call for motion. So moved by Ms. Hilson. Ms. Kensley, second by Ms. Hilson. All in favor? Oh, no, we're not voting at this time, I'm sorry. Does any board member have a comment on the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am, I have a comment on 13.1.
Okay.
And that's about it.
Okay, can you make your comment because we don't have to pull it for separate vote?
That's right. That's just, this, what we're about to vote on is my limit for this one. I don't want to see it get any higher in cost.
Okay.
So, let the superintendent know and let other board members know too if this is, this is the ceiling.
Okay. All right, any other comments from the board? Is there any consent item that we want to pull for separate discussion and separate Seeing none, we'll call for a vote on the consent agenda, please. Motion? I'm calling for a vote now, yes. All right, okay, all in favor? Any disagree? Okay, motion carries 5-0. Thank you, board. At this time, for informational report only, we do have our different charter schools that's on the list of the agenda and that is for our informational report alone. At this time, we ask our superintendent to do staff reports on any selected items that you may have.
Thank you. Last week, we met with the board in a private session regarding the security of our schools and some of the upgrades and things that we're doing and just for the general public's knowledge, we have been really reviewing all of our protocols. We've been working closely with law enforcement for St. Lucie Sheriff's Department and Fort Pierce PD to look at protocols, look at communications. We're doing a comprehensive review at each school center as well, been meeting with our principals. In fact, we had a principals' meeting right before this meeting today and I really want to commend our principals and our teachers and our staffs for the excellent job they've been doing during, doing, doing during this very trying time for all of us in education and we will continue to do that. It won't be a one-time event and we've got some major renovations planned for this summer at schools that had already been in place. The school board has put some significant dollars over the last few years towards school safety ever since the Sandy Hook incident occurred and we shared that with our board members as well last week and so we will continue to do that. Today, we had a press conference as well, well, last week we had a press conference right here with the three chiefs, the sheriff and the two chiefs from PSL and from Fort Pierce and talked to the press and answered some questions. And today, we did that again over with Sheriff Mascara where he announced that he'd have a school resource officer in all of our school centers. And so, we appreciate that on his behalf. We know we're not done. We're waiting for the legislature to finish this week. I'm sure the board members will have some comments on that, as did Mrs. Hill, in a few moments. But we remain ever vigilant on this and our principals, again, have been doing a great job and we have prioritized through our facilities and maintenance, any of the life safety orders that have come forward and those are sent in to me almost daily and I review those and we gave those to our principals tonight. So, we've got a good system in place and safety, as I know, with this school board has always been, the student safety and staff safety is our highest priority and we'll continue to work together on that. Couple of other things, the SAT is going to be offered to all of our 11th graders and select 12th graders on March 7th and this will happen during the school day, the Student School Day. And this is, this is free. This is free for our students. I know our principals and the high school principals have been getting this word out to our students and very pleased with what we have. This, I believe this Thursday, March 8th, we'll have the Unified Track Meet over at Lawnwood Stadium at 3:00. This is where Central, Westwood, PSL, Centennial, and Treasure Coast High School, the students will come over and compete in the 400, 400 by 100 meter relay, 400 by 100 meter relay twice, I don't think they're going to do it twice, and the 100 meter dash and softball toss. And then, there's a Unified Regional Meet and this is for, for some of our very special students and so we look forward to that. Kevin already alluded to Music in Our Schools Month and we have, I know the school board has acknowledged and values Music in the School and the Arts. This is a great announcement as well between, for now and between now and the end of the year, all students will be able to have a free breakfast. Free breakfast meals will be provided for every student. So, we encourage our students to take, taking, to take advantage of that. And then, an announcement that I made today to our principals and was met with, the most excited I've seen them in a long time, is this summer, we're going to go and pilot a four-day work week for all of our 12-month employees in most of our departments. Maintenance and facilities will be working the five-day week, but all others will be going for the four-day work week. So, we look forward to implementing that and I wish you could have been in the room when I announced it to our principals. They were very excited about that and there was no one that objected, so it was unanimous from our principals. And that can, that concludes my remarks for this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Gent. We will ask our attorney if there are any comments or discussions. Okay, so, we're going to start over here with Mr. Ingersoll.
Yes, ma'am. I just want to thank Mr. Gent and Sheriff Mascara for all their hard work the last couple of days and just getting out, talking to focus groups, talking to community leaders and also talking to the people in the schools and just, just done a great job there. Last week, me and Ms. Harley worked FFA booth and the fair and it was just awesome to work with those students and just to see how work, how well they worked along with their teacher and just thank you for the community coming out and supporting them in their efforts to raising, raising funds for their, for their efforts. Also, the school booths, thank you, principals, for putting your schools out there and a lot of people went through them and really saw what, what different programs you had in your school. So, it was a great, great thing. And also, we also saw Jane Whittaker and the cast and Sam Gaines out there handing information and just was a lot of, lot of information handed out. So, I just appreciate their efforts in trying to get things moving off the ground for our community.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll, Ms. Harley.
I have to reiterate what Mr. Ingersoll said because we really did have a good time working in the FFA booth last week and then to have the opportunity to wander around and see so many of our students that participated in the fair at different levels, whether it be a small animal or a large animal, but we're really doing great things to show our children where food comes from and how it is to be an owner of a pet and the responsibilities that go along with that. So, I appreciate all the schools and your leadership with that. Last week was also Dr. Seuss's birthday, so there were multiple opportunities to be in schools and read and appreciate that very much. There's, one of the highlights of our, our time as a school board member is to be able to be in the school and to be with the children because after all, is why we get up and do what we do every day. It's all about the students and you that take care of them on a daily basis. I want to add my thanks as well to all the school administrators and staff. It's been a trying couple of weeks, an emotional couple of weeks for all of us and you've just been exemplary and I have every confidence that our children are in safe and secure schools, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Harley, Ms. Hilson.
Yes. I want to also say thank you to the superintendent. He has worked so hard to make sure our schools are secure along with their internal security in the school system and our principals. You're on the front lines and our teachers and our bus drivers and everyone that's part of our school and we know we've been doing training every year in every school and that we feel as though we're prepared. My angst is the fact that it takes a tragedy for the state of Florida and our legislature and our governor to say, gee, it's time that we do something about mental health in our schools with our children and too little, too late because I see too often that they put together proposals that, you know, are done after five years, the money's gone and the money drives, dries up for safe schools and then you have to do another grant and it's always this chasing after the money when it comes to security for our children. But I do believe the superintendent and Sheriff Mascara and, and our security along with our principals are making sure that our schools are safe and we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, Ms. Hilson. Ms. Hensley, please.
Because of all that has been going on recently, the State League of Women Voters have created a collaboration of many organizations, Citizens for Gun Safety and we, some of us actually dumped in some money to actually hire a lobbyist to try to do some significant conversation at arms-length from those of us who are said to be feathering our nest at times. Also, there is a new push. We have, League of Women Voters has a statewide education action team that has been following 7055 and some other things that actually somebody is now living in Tallahassee during this session. So, there are other entities who are helping the big cause of children and their safety. Also, there is a National March for Children. In our county, I believe it's going to be at Tradition Square on March 24th. And there's a lot of energy behind young people. There's a lot of interest in getting them not only registered to vote, but helping them understand the importance of their vote and that those civics lessons will be proceeding. And on a different note, this is more positive, the extension has a brand-new for-age agent. She is a certified teacher. She's a vet tech. She's a water specialist. She has quite a lot of skill sets that she brings with her and they are working on, the extension agents are working on making sure anybody that works out there can go into a classroom and teach. And so, that's another push that was going forward. That's a really good thing because they're very excited about what's going on in the district and the University of Florida is very willing to have extension agents be more actively involved in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley. I want to first of all, recognize, I can't even, I can't even think of your name right now, my mind is skipping me.
No, no.
She's back at Lincoln Park Academy here.
Candace.
Candace, Candace Stone. We, I'm just so pleased to see you sitting there tonight. Okay, school safety, our superintendent already spoke about that and we are doing everything for those parents or community members that may be watching right now. You may be asking, what are we doing locally? We are doing everything in our power locally to ensure the safety of every student here in St. Lucie County Public Schools. Our administration, our superintendent, our educators, we are all working together in even upping with different trainings as well as whatever we need within our schools to increase the safety. Our security department has done a fabulous job and, and again, as we've all thanked our sheriff for allowing extra deputy in every school, but we are doing our part here in St. Lucie County to keep our children safe and we thank everyone that has participated in that. We did have something that happened this month that is brand-new for St. Lucie County. Our federal courthouse put on an essay contest that went throughout the district on the importance of voting among our students. So, all- So, all high schools were welcome to participate in that, that contest, and we received 80 different essays, the federal courthouse. First time they've ever done this for Black History Month, they've never had such a program in our county on the federal courthouse level as this month. And our first-place winner, we had four places for winning. Our first-place winner went to a young man from Fort Pierce Central. We also, I believe, had a winner from Lincoln Park and a couple of our other high schools. So, that's a first time for us, and want to make that announcement. And all of the federal judges that participated in that program have asked if we would do it again next year in February, right here in St. Lucie County. So, that's how successful that program was. At this time, we are all clear with our board meeting, so we will now adjourn. Good night.